You and me if if I would have just you know taken you through the whole thing to the whole exercise. So now today what we have done is that we will be going to the P P T again like a very quick overview of the P P T. Of of what we discussed previously and then more importantly, we'll be going into what a practical case study. Which is uh what we are here to do, right? So let's let's start off with that. First and foremost, if you're not following Seth Gordon, you're missing out on a lot. Please follow Seth Gordon, he's my hero, he is an absolute amazing human being and someone who has. Impacted a lot of lot of lives, so you know just to start following his work, his his blog is probably the top most. Five blogs, under top five topmost blogs in the world, yeah? And um just just you know start following him and look at his podcast, look at his his videos and so on. Okay, so that's that's a good start, so see basically what is content marketing? Content marketing is is just another way of adding value, okay, so don't don't overcomplicate it, don't think of it as something which is. You know extremely complex. We as as brands, what we try to do is that we are trying to add value. We try to serve our customers. And initially, you know, we used to add value only through our services, but then the internet came along. And internet basically gives us an opportunity to add value through through other ways, through content. Yes, and it allows us to do that, so previously, for example, if if I was, you know, if I was a, let's say baker. I could only add value to you if I could bake cakes for you. I could add value to you if let's say once in a while I could conduct a cake, let's say cake making workshop for you. But now what I can do is that I can daily make videos or blogs or podcasts about my journey with this bakery. And then that adds value to you, so that has changed, so don't overcomplicate it. Content is is a thing which which adds value and which in turn generates a lot of trust. It generates a lot of trust and credibility. Yeah, so it it helps in these these things, brand awareness, new audience, lead generation, et cetera, et cetera. Uh it it is one of the most impactful, you know, activities. Then a lot of marketers now believe that it it plays a big role. And you must have seen the shift that has taken place. Yeah, so now you have so many brands doing it, let's say, you know, you 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 are being offered a particular service by a brand. And you have two options. Option number one is that they have a good website, but no content on it. And option number two is that they have ten, fifty and hundred blogs written on that topic, you read the blogs, you connect with them, you like them. And immediately have an instant connect with the with the brand as compared to case one, simply because they have they have put efforts in producing content. So content, you know, basically gives owns a lot of trust for for the brands and that's that's all it comes down to. And we love trust, okay, human beings love trust, we only buy from buy from brands with about whom we are aware and whom we trust. So this is the summary of the whole thing, which is what content builds, trust. Now, let's let's break a few myths about content because, you know, I think we I have observed that there is this one. Uh you know, concept, one habit that us marketers have that we tend to think of content as some, you know, thing which is out of our reach. It's it's not really, and so in the coming myths, I in the in in the coming slides, I'll try to break break some myths and make you all. Understand, or my my job is to make you all understand that concentration is possible and concentration is not that difficult. So firstly, content doesn't need to be serious and I know the struggle, all right, I know the struggle of convincing the client. That hey man, the content doesn't need to be serious, I know that struggle, but yes, eventually we have to convince people, we have to ourselves get convinced that content doesn't mean that you all. You are like a robot, it means simply means that you add value to people, we we also look at a look at few case studies where. The content that was being made was extremely funny, it it doesn't have to be serious even if it's a B two B brand. Yeah, then uh content needs to be engaging fifty four percent, market has struggled to create why, because it has to have a storytelling aspect. It has to have any most resonance to it and in some cases it has to have a humor to it. Yeah, we also looked at a uh you know, a case study which is by by Cisco, where they have created this particular uh. This particular website where Cisco, you know, which is a serious company, direct to networking. And they out here, what they do is that stories about you know what about the change that that they are making. So you have to understand that sometimes the brand is extremely serious, let's say if you're into the, if if your brand makes tires. Or if your brand makes cylinders, it's gonna be hard for you to create content if you don't have a story. So you have to attach all that and build build a story around that particular concept, you're not really selling tires, you're you're selling a story. You're not really selling cylinders, you're selling a story, so what is that story, figure it figure it out or build on it and then your whole marketing should revolve around that. Another example was by was by Rico when they made uh these kind of cartoons, this kind of animations on on I believe software developers, yeah? Um so uh that's another example. Then it takes a big village to make a comic content, absolutely not, it only takes a few people, it it can only be one person as well. The point is not to really dilute yourself by making everything, by going everywhere, the point is to simply focus on one piece of content, something that you are good at. And then, you know, we will do more of that, so it can be just one person initially and that's that's, you know, good enough, of course, it's hard work. But it can work, so don't think that for you I need to have a ten fifteen member content marketing team, no. Now, this is a little harsh, which is uh people care about your brand and uh. It it takes a bit of time to, you know, really make peace with it, but but admit it's actually true. People don't really care about your brand, which doesn't mean that they are ruthless, it simply means that all of us as human beings are more wired to figure out. You know how a brand is particularly helping us. And the mistake is that brands make which during their marketing is that they have messages like. Oh, our brand is the best brand, it it has, you know, thirty percent more this thing than the other brand and the competition. And we have engineers in China and all of that, who cares? You know, social media does not care, the social media only cares what kind of value you add. So the fundamental shift that happens in content marketing, you know, which is such a big shift for everyone and which is which I personally have found challenging as well. Is the the shift of becoming a selfless person, is the shift of looking at whom you are serving. And then producing content which adds value to them because content is not about you, content is about how you can like make their life better, it's definitely not about you at all. Yeah, so uh we have to indulge in in giving, in in being generous, that's what will give us results in the in the long run. So stop selling, start giving is is what is is recommended. What I'll do is that I'll cover all of this in one go and then I'll take on question answers, okay? So um then you have the quality versus quantity thing. The whole battle of quality versus quantity, I think those who were there in my previous batch, I gave you all the same example that. If you if you if you focus on quantity without focusing on quality and it happens quite a bit, uh it's 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 not going to work out for you, yeah? So for example, uh you know, if if you realize that you have not created content for quite a few days. And you have to publish something which which in one hour, but you don't have any post ready. And if you go to the designer and say, yeah, you know, just just make something for me, I need to I need to keep my boss happy, I need to keep my client happy. Uh you will publish a content, yes, your blog boss will be happy temporarily, your client will be happy, but overall your marketing value will go down because you have put up. Very substandard quality posts, so more content doesn't mean better performance, you have to be intelligent about it, it it requires the study of analytics, it requires. You know, being qualitative as well. Yeah, then uh just a quote which says that, yeah, mediocre content will hurt your brand more than doing anything at all. This is a quote which is what I anyway was talking. Now. One sec. Now the next part is is this which is identifying, you know, good content or the creating good content, I wouldn't just call it identifying. Uh so you know, where does value lie? Value lies in the intersection of of being informative and entertaining as well, okay? Uh can you guys think of these examples when it is it is uh informative and uh in entertaining as well for you? Can you can you can you? Does does any brand come to your mind if it is informative as well as this thing? Cadbury, okay, Amul, yes, Flipkart as well, okay, okay. Uh have you guys Nike, yes, have you guys heard of Gary Vaynerchuk, who or have heard of Gary Vaynerchuk? No, I've heard of Gary Vaynerchuk, you have to check out Gary Vaynerchuk, one of the most incredible social media marketers out there, so you have to check him. So you know, when you find a sweet spot between uh being entertaining but adding value as well. You have actually been a jackpot. Many times we have the knowledge, we have the information, but we you know, we can't really uh put it in a in a very entertaining way. Yeah, so when a brand basically is is able to crack the score, you know, of of being informative and entertaining. You know, magic really happens, okay? It's Gary Vaynerchuk, B A Y N E R C H U C K, Vaynerchuk. A few questions to ask yourself is is will the will it will it be helpful? Okay, will it be inspiring and will it be entertaining? Yeah, now, okay, you might say that not every content is entertaining, which is fine, but it's good to have these kind of flavors. Flavors to your content because uh you know, then we are entertained or when you smile or laugh, your mind is more open than when you're serious. So always remember that, then we looked at this 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 beautiful formula, which is company's expertise, audience pain points and interests and contented. And we will speak we'll speak about this this uh this sweet spot going ahead as well. So yeah, this is this is a really, really cool diagram, something which is like a blueprint for you. Now, uh we looked at a framework as to how to create this thing and then we looked at these things, persona need, bigger content. Business challenge and then distribution strategy, okay? Now, it it all uh starts with the objectives, so you have to set a goal, whether you want lead generation. Uh whether you want brand awareness as one thing or do you want to create customer advocacy? Yeah, so all of these are good objectives to to set and depending on those objectives, you can then, you know, jump into into content marketing. Now, buyer persona, yeah, we will talk a lot about this, does anyone of you know the? I think in the in the previous batch with the older students, I think I've discussed this quite extensively, but I I just want to discuss upon that point again. What all, what do you think does the word empathy mean? What does empathy mean for you all, you guys know the meaning of the word empathy? Okay, understanding, appreciating, to feel for others, understanding one situation, okay, you're almost there, but I think. I think that's that's a better way to put it, which is wearing others in another shoes. No, it has not got got anything to do with sorrow feelings, feelings, ability to understand and share the feelings of others, yes, exactly. And a lot of empathy is needed in marketing, you know, like I said, it's it's lacking in in many brands, you know, people. And brands start talking about themselves, but it's not about, it's about what the other person is going through. And if you want to help the other person, you won't be able to help the other person unless and until you understand what they are going through. It's easy to say that the other person is wrong, the other person is stupid, but if you if you really make an effort, you will see that in their head, they're actually right. Because in our head, everyone is right, because we do those things. Yeah, so empathy is is building, is 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 really cultivating that habit of of getting into someone else's shoes. And your marketing begins with that and developing buyer personas is a great way to do it. So you sit down, you know, you don't even need your internet for that, you just sit down, you figure out that, okay, if I am offering, let's say photography service. And let's say the bride, uh I I'm doing I'm doing it for weddings and the decision maker is the bride. I'll just sit down, I'll just figure out, okay, what is the bride going through? One, you know, she is extremely tense, two, she wants to look good in her in the photographs, she she wants to show off her husband. And so on and so forth, and when you prepare these points, when you have ten fifteen twenty thirty fifty of search points. Now your content marketing is extremely easy because now you know what the other person is going through. And immediately when you write something which addresses that pain point, the customer is delighted. Why? Because they have a fear that, oh man, this person gets me, I'm gonna sign up with him. That's the power of empathy, that that's a broader concept and this is development of buyer personas, so you you. Be empathetic and you develop buyer personas and you talk about these these things, what they're interested in, what are their challenges. What influences them, what common objections they have to process and so on and so forth. Yeah, that's what development of buyer personas is. So personas are people too, so who, what and why is is what we look into. There are a few real tools to research, you can look at Google Trends, LinkedIn Trending Content, BuzzSumo and Answer the Public. I have only used Google Trends, you guys can use the other things, these these tools kind of help you to figure out. Uh what kind of topics people are searching for, yeah? So that's that, then. Then what do you do? You get into this mindset of bigger rock content, okay, one sec, I'll just move up so that. Ah, so tell me one thing, what does bigger rock content mean to you, because you have gone through the recording already, please let me know what does big rock content mean? What is bigger of content basically? Uh no, Saki, no, that's not what it means. Okay, the masterpiece, yes, okay. Overall, no pressure, that's a very wide answer. Ha, yes, yes, okay, so the example that is given is of a turkey, which is that you don't eat the whole turkey in one go. Yes, yes, you take uh the turkey, you break break it into different slices and then you reuse it. And it's it's, see, anyway, your marketing story does not change every day. It's not that one day you are saying this and then the other next day you are saying that, no. The marketing story will remain the same and hence, you know, we need to. Really, we can we can afford to share the same message message again and again with within a different presentations. So turkey content allows you to do that, so you break this turkey and you you uh this this turkey can, you know, be. In a lot of formats and you can actually cut it into smaller posts. All right, so before this, okay, so let me ask this uh ask this question. Do you guys, can you guys think of examples of bigger of content that you have seen and then the person has used it? Again and again, have you seen a brand using it by any chance? Has anyone seen this? Because I've seen it quite a bit. Flipkart does it award, okay? Amul, I'm not so sure, Neha, difficult with that, does it, okay? All right, so you know, I will share a couple of examples myself, uh I'll type something, maybe you guys can, you know, take a look at its data. Impact Theory is a venture by someone named Tom Bilyeu and what he does is that he interviews people. He interviews people and he publishes an interview, now after that interview has been published, it's like a very big interview, it's a forty five minute or sixty minute interview. And that he posts anyway, but then over the period of time, over the next one month, two months, three months. He 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 has a video editing team which will cut small, small pieces of those videos where a person is talking about a particular topic. And that video then becomes a separate video, so he has the bigger of content, here is the whole interview. And then you have it broken into smaller pieces. Another example is I I spoke about Gary Vaynerchuk, so he is also a keynote speaker. Which means that he will go to conferences and give big, big talks. Now, these talks can be of, let's say, one hour, one one and a half hour, then there are question answers in those talks. Again, what his 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 team does is that they take this content, they pub they publish the bigger of content, but then they also take the call. Take the quotes from that, take question answers from that, maybe they make posts out of it, they make small, small videos out of it. And that again becomes, you know, an ongoing content. Yeah, and you know, this is something that I have to confess, I learnt when I when I was teaching this session for the first time. Big rock content piece was something that I learnt and I was amazed as to how powerful this is. And I was feeling a little silly for not having thought of this earlier. Because we always have this pressure, right, of creating new content all the time, well, no, if you are managing it properly, if you're managing it wisely. You will have an unlimited, you know, supply of content. Yeah, so that is why I think big rock concept is extremely powerful. Uh okay, so this is this is this exercise is not. Eleven, so we looked at a few content types, we have turkey, reason brand content, spinach content, turkey is the big rock, reason brand is the small. Basic content, spinach content is, you know, maybe something which is a little complicated for you to uh, you know, really digest, yeah? Maybe some something which is difficult to chew, chocolate cake corner, which is happy content, uh sweet continent, tobasco content is is something which is which can be. Let's say a controversial content or something, you know, which is like a fiery content and so on. Of course, it doesn't mean that you do all of this, you can pick and choose from these, but yeah, if you can distribute it something like this. You know, on Sunday I have this kind of content, on Monday I have this, on Tuesday I have this, then uh you know, you you also get a nice variety. To what you to what you have to offer to social media and then other messages also also given. Yeah, so uh then we kind of, you know, jumped into a case study. Which was LinkedIn's own case study when they when they created a marketer's guide to content marketing. And what they did was that firstly, they did their market research, like I said, empathy. Figuring out what they're going through, it's not that's a LinkedIn, now we have this much of expertise, let's create content on that, no. Make an effort to figure out what is going on through the minds of the customer. Okay, make an effort to to figure out what they are going through and then create content on that. Yes, a market research, getting into the shoes of the customer, empathy, all of these are important pointers. Then they realized that Namita, who let's say is a marketing manager at bank in Bangalore, is single in her late twenties, lives with her parents and younger sister. And the the kind of challenges that she has are these, so you know, there's a lack of process for creating content. Uh then, yeah, so basically, yeah, uh the the challenges, the. The main challenges were that Indian marketers create content in-house typically and there was a lack of process for creating content. So LinkedIn took this and then they decided to produce a producer journal or rather a guide around it. A blueprint around around it, so the person I need was blueprint, the business challenge of LinkedIn, what was it, increase increase in lead volume. Yeah, and so but they realized that they couldn't make, they couldn't just make a guide for any other market, they wanted to. Make it fit which for local awareness, for for the local audience, which means that they wanted to. Make it for India person and not just, you know, copy paste the one that they had made for US and spread across India. Yeah, so then what they did was that they made an Indian version of this of this guy. Which kind of looks something like this, so these guys, by the way, are extremely, you know, detailed, they start off with. The introduction and then they go go into the theory part and then they go into the practical bit of it and so on and so forth. So as you can clearly see, it's a it's a big rock. Yeah, so now they realize that Namita has this various social media platforms daily, now one part is creating that content. And the second part is of course, uh you know, presenting it it to the other person, yeah? Or distributing it to the to the other person, so uh you know, what they realized that, okay, you know, Namita kind of likes to consume. Content which is, let's say, inspirational humor, personal updates, news, instructions, et cetera. And then they, this is what they had produced, a local marketing guide and then they broke it into different pieces. Or rather, sorry, these are the different distributions of of that content. So they had it in search, they had it in email, publications, employees, LinkedIn, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, et cetera. Yeah, these were the distribution distribution channels and then they also did some, you know, testing. Then, you know, they they realized that, okay, we can tell the same story again within in different copies. By using different copies and then they realized they could optimize the one that was performing the best. And then the big rock content was broken down into these small, small things like mini guide, graphics, blog series, podcasts, et cetera. Slideshows, et cetera. Uh now, as far as the measurement was concerned, it starts with downloads, leads is is what the ultimate objective was. But feedback also was something, you know, which was which was a goal and also which which helped in refining the content again. So this this analytics part is extremely important, when you, it's not just about creating, you also have to see how what kind of an impact it's it's making, right? So it's not just the what, it also has the so what, which means that you have to. We have to take the base or we have to take the result and process it and then, you know, use it to better our marketing. Otherwise, the analytics are are useless, uh so the the number one converge, I mean, the number one thing that was the aim, which was the which was the convergence. And that's why this model was suggested. So if you guys remember, again, this is applicable for those who were with me in the last batch. In the media plan, I had suggested that never start off with, so I I during the media plan, I had asked a question during the media plan creation that. What is the first question that you'll ask the client when you create a media plan and a few of you had answered that? You ask what is the budget? But I had said that is not the right question to ask, you ask with what is it that you want to achieve? At the end of the day, because that's where your market, that's where your media plan should start, similarly. Here the same approach has been suggested, you don't really start off with this and then go there, you start, sorry, with this and then go here, you start off with this. That, you know, I need to have this, then how do I go about the content? So that's a fundamental three sixty degree shift. Yeah, so uh sorry, so these were the, you know, the. The the kind of analytics that, you know, that LinkedIn went into, yeah? So that's that's one really cool case study. Okay, so as you know, as we wrap up this, there was this another example. Which was by by this brand, so this is by, you know, C I O State Talk, which is again a a community for C I Os. So look how niche this is, I only have a community which which talks about C I Os. And when you create such kind of a tribe, you know, what happens is that people, because no one wants to feel left out, if I am a C I O. And if I come to know that there is a there is a group that only C I Os meet, I of course want to be a part of that group. Yeah, so then there was case study when they looked at, you know, all of these things like the the first thing of the customer ROI. So you get subscription data, brand loyalty, you get the data ROI, which means that you get the research, you get to understand what they are going through. What are their problems, you also get the campaign ROI, which is the webinar and white paper downloads. And the last is that all of this is is converted into, I mean, not all of this, but some of it is converted into businesses. And hence you can also measure the the business ROI also, all right? And yeah, uh like this, there were a couple of more case studies which was what we discussed. So just to, so now before we get into the brainstorming, just a few key takeaways. Um content is only a nervous print, seek opportunities to tell a story, inspire, educate and entertain, we spoke about this. Test, learn and and optimize E B test, so don't think that you know, you have you have it all figured out. You have to keep on testing, you have to keep on doing stuff. You should show a video, you could show a video of your brand landing on Mars, but if it is not relevant to your brand's mission, it it will not perform. Okay, so again, uh when I was, let's say, two, three years back working in an agency. You know what my boss used to say, prepare a creative piece of content, now preparing a creative piece of content is. Is such a wide thing to say, I mean, how would I know what is creative? Yeah, should I try to be funny, should I try to be this or should I try to be that, et cetera? But if you prepare a mission first, you know, if you decide that, okay, this is what I want to do. And now when you start creating content, then it's a difference, because every piece of content is basically to achieve that mission. So having a mission, having a strong why is absolutely important, essential and hence in the brainstorming, we'll talk about that as well. We'll start off with that. And hence in the brainstorming, we'll talk about that as well. We'll start off with that in fact. And then move, move to the other, other things, yeah? Uh, there are a few tools and resources, uh, you pitch, you can, I hope you have this P P T, even if you don't, you can download it. And you can look at these, uh, these, uh, resources, they will, they will help you, uh. With these tools, they'll help you with different, different functions, alright? Okay, so like I said, we'll move to the brainstorming, but first I'd like to know if you have any conceptual questions about this. Okay, if you have any, uh, questions, please let me know, I'll give you all a couple of minutes. Okay, uh, Bhavana, yes, conduct brand impacts study, compare pre-campaign and post-campaign. Uh, did the brand recall go up? Ah, so good question, Bhavana. Uh, so you know, the, this is a little technical, now. See, there are different, different, uh, formulae for measuring this, this thing known as brand recall. Uh, and I personally find them a little confusing. You can, you know, almost, there, there's, there's a Facebook, there's a model, a model by Facebook, in, in Facebook blueprint. When they only speak about brand, uh, you know, uh, brand recall, measuring the brand recall. What I, so in that aspect, I will be able to provide you very limited, other, other, no value at all. But I think what I would suggest is that you measure one, that is the reach that you could achieve in the campaign. And secondly, uh, you could measure the trust that has been developed. And now how to measure the trust is an abstract thing. So you have to figure it out for yourself. So for example. Number of comments or the number of interactions that I get on my blog is a, is a matrix for trust. Or number of positive comments that I get on my Facebook status is also a matrix for trust. Or best is the number of responses that I get to my email campaign, that's also trust. So if you could, if you could manage to, uh, you know, create formulae to measure this. You know, you will have created, you would have answered your own question, because now you would know that the brand impact has gone up. So as you can see, Bhavana, it's, it's not really a formula, it's, it's more of you. Being logical, being an artist and scientist at the same time. And then applying it for your case, for your business, because it will, it will depend heavily on what type of a business you are into. So these are the few ways in which, in which I can, uh, answer this. Let me know if you have any counter question. A native content is, is simply a content which is native to the platform, uh, it's, it's as simple as that, so. Uh, by definition, it simply means a piece of content which is, which fits culturally in the platform. So for example. When you, you have heard of native ads? So when, when you do native ads, the ads basically fit into the format of that particular platform. If I do na-. If I do native ads on Google, it simply means that, uh, they fit in the content, in the, in the, in the context of that particular platform. Yeah, so for example, native content for LinkedIn would be something which is a little serious. Native content on Instagram, which is something that will be a little visual. Native cons- content on Twitter will be more around being witty or sarcastic. Make sense? Yeah? Uh, if the goal is customer advocacy, how do you go about, uh, setting the goals and measures? Again, good question. Uh, see advocacy. Ah, okay, so let's say for example, if it's a course. The advocacy measurement matrix for you would be the number of referrals that the customer is giving. So rather how many people, so you must have seen, you know, a lot of people give codes. That if you give this code, then your friend will be able to access this course at ten percent discount. Why do they do that? They do it simply because they want to measure how much, you know, brand advocacy is, is working out. So that is one example that I can give, you know, so it, it totally depends on, on, on the business. Uh, I thi- I think also Bhavana, I have to touch on one point, which is direct marketing and brand marketing. Direct marketing is something which is, you know, measurable, you know, absolutely measurable. Brand marketing, on the other hand, is, is something which can't always be measured. And it's not an answer that, that marketers like you and me or our boss, bosses want to hear. But the truth is that a lot of things we actually can't measure. So I think this is something just to keep in, in your mind as you address these questions. That yes, I want to measure customer advocacy for my particular brand. I, I will be able to, you know, measure this in one, two, three ways. One is, let's say, for example, the referrals. You know, or second is the number of times they talk, talk to you or respond to your mails, could be another, an- another way of measuring it and so on. Yeah, and thirdly, just knowing that, yes, I will not be able to measure everything and that's okay. How to effectively invert the sales funnel shown in the video? Where can I get the industry standard figures? Oh, there, there are no industry standard figures, it, it all depends on, on, uh. On your target market. So for example, the industry standard figures for a software testing industry. In, in Bangalore versus, let's say in California, will be totally different. And advertisement is really not about science, it's, it's a lot about art. For example, if you, if you advertise in, in the valent, uh, in the, in the Christmas phase, the prices will go up. Why? The prices will go up because there's a lot of competition out there. Yeah, in, let's say if you do it in September, it will be okay. So I suggest that do not depend on, uh. On industry figures, you start off with what you wanna achieve, alright? Let's say you wanna achieve ten leads for a particular product, cool, that has been established. Now you backtrack, so of course in the first iteration, you would not know how much is actually needed. So what you do is that you try to do a pilot campaign or a test campaign. So if your budget is, let's say, uh. You know, tentatively you have made up your mind to spend twenty thousand dollars, you don't spend all of it, you just start off with a budget of hundred dollars. And you see how that goes. Yeah, and then you learn something from that. And then you go on building the funnel. So one is actually experimenting or building a test campaign. And a second way of doing it is talking to your colleagues, talking to your superiors and then, then figuring out those ratios. Because even if you talk to LinkedIn guys or Facebook guys, they would not give you the exact percentage or the, the exact ratios, because it just isn't possible to do so. Can you mail us the format for content strategy and planning and for content audit shown in the video? You will have the P P T. Uh, not sure what else, uh, you are expecting, Sadhguru. You, you'll have this P P T for sure, you can talk to the course coordinator. No, 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 no. Okay, good question by Ritu. What I wanted to understand was when preparing a content strategy, should we focus on target audience only? Because most brands want to talk to at least two, two, three, three audience groups at one point in time. Uh, my suggestion, Ritu, would be to focus on the smallest possible audience, especially if you are starting. Okay, I'm not sure if you guys know of the Rogers curve and, and things like that. It, everything starts with, you know, a smaller group of people. Let's take Apple for example. When Apple was building, so the reason I talk about Apple is because it's a successful brand, it's a brand which was like a visionary brand, like an incredible story they have. If they would have started focusing on all the target groups, they would have lost or their solutions would have been watered down. The key with Apple was that they said no to ninety nine point ninety nine percent of the people. No, we will not make Apple products cheap, no, we will not make Apple products easy and so on. So only the nerds, only the geeks, only the weirdos were actually buying Apple. But then the word spread and then it got up, up to a brand which is now mass market brand. Yeah, so my, my, my suggestion is that when you start, you start off with an extremely small audience, because if you try to please everyone, you try, you end up pleasing no one. So figure out what you want to, who you want to serve and then stick to that only for a long time. Does that make sense, Ritu? Is it essential to have, uh, some writing skills for content marketing? If you are doing blogging, then yes, you need content ma- writing skills. If you are gonna depend on podcasting, you need to have speaking skills. If you wanna do video, then you need to have a video personality. So yes, the answer is yes. You need to have one way of representing yourself, you or the brand, basically. One good way of, of representing yourself, but a good part is that. Most of us possess either of these one things, you know, we are either good speakers or we are good writers, uh, and so on, and you can always develop on, on that. Content should be dependent on the target audience and which media you want to use, correct? Because it is not, huh, that's correctly, I guess. So this is our discussion from the previous module. Don't be tempted into thinking that, okay, I want to be on Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, this and that, no. I mean, yes, uh, choose the platforms which actually add value, but just don't be on platform because your competitor is, is, is there. Your, your competition is there, no. You figure out what will help you make the maximum impact. And then you stick to that, uh, that platform itself. And of course, like you said, in the first part of the question, it depends on the target audience as well. Yeah, would love to also have tips on how to convince clients. That's a good point, Ritu, and, uh. It's a struggle, I mean, see theoretically, even if I say this practically, when I come up with it, come across a di- a difficult client. I have the same issues, so I exactly know what you mean, but that doesn't change the truth. Okay, so, uh, I mean, the, the truth is that. If you, if you try to please everyone, you try to please no one. It's as simple and it's, it's difficult. It's hard because we're afraid to say no to ninety nine percent of the people. It's hard not saying that, no, this is not for you. The natural tendency of the mind is to please everyone. Oh, you think my product should be for ten rupees only? Okay, I'll reduce the price. Oh, you think that, uh, I need to add two, two more cups of, or two more spoons of sugar into this? Okay, I will do that. And if you keep on taking every input from all of these guys, and then your product is a shitty product. Because you are not, you're trying to please everyone. That's how it works. You have to find out ways of finding better clients. And also speaking a language that your clients understand, existing clients understand, so that you can convince them. Okay, cool. If, if everyone is with, with me, just type in mumos, so I can move ahead, just type in mumos. Type in mumos, so I know that I can move ahead into the brainstorming. Moms, no, you are mumos, huh? Yes. Okay, cool. What we'll do is that when we do brainstorming, we'll basically do, take a B to C case study and then take a B to B case study. You know, so we have, uh, we have an option for both. Although we have, we will have an experience with both of them. So, one second. Okay, so one of my favorite ones is, is basically a yoga teacher, which I've done in the previous batch as well. But the beauty is that you will be able to get deeper into this one case study after this exercise. Okay, so look at the business case study. I hope it's, it's, it's visible. The yoga teacher who has recently started a stu- yoga studio in K P. She offers services like regular, regular yoga batches at the studio and also one-to-one yoga services at the, at the clients, please. Okay, now I want you all, I'll just give you all a couple of minutes to think about this. Firstly, think about what change are you trying to make, you know, what is it for? This will build the positioning of the brand, the story of the brand. Then you talk about who is it for, when you define the target market, yeah? Then we go to empathy and then we jump into the content. But for now, just think about. What is it for? What change are you trying to make to this yoga class? Who is it for? And then think about the empathy. So just, if you wanna make notes, you can. I'll just give you all a couple of minutes to be with this case study. Okay, so let's talk about, uh, you know, positioning or other, okay, before we get to positioning, let's talk about this. What is it for and what change are you trying to make? Now, before you start any project, this is not even a part of content marketing, alright? This is just how to start a project. Before you start a project, you should know what is it for. Or another way of asking this is, what change are you trying to make? Or another way of asking this same question is, how to, uh. What is the why of your business? What is the why of your business? Have you guys, uh. Watch this TED Talk by Simon Sinek. Is the third most watched TED Talk. Start with why. Have you guys wa- watched it? The golden circle, yes, yes. Okay, no one has watched it, so okay, just type in the name, you can just Google this guy. Uh, a brilliant TED Talk, where he argues that people don't buy what you do, they buy why you do it. Which means that every business that you take, you know, uh, that you start or every project that you take, it has got to have a why. It has got to have a reason you're doing it. It has, it has got to do with some change that you are trying to make. Because if you just start a restaurant, let's say there's an ice cream, ice cream shop. And you start another ice cream shop, just opposite the existing ice cream shop. And if you offer the same, uh, kind of ice cream to the people, you're not solving any new problem. Yeah, you are not making any new change, you're simply hoping that people will buy from you. But now, if you start an ice cream shop, which is, let's say, only a vegan ice cream shop. Yeah, or let's say it, it has only lactose-free ice cream. Now you're talking, why? Because now you are catering to a small portion of the audience and you're, what are the, what is the problem that you're solving? You're basically trying to solve the problem of, of giving ice cream to people who are lactose intolerant or people who are vegan. Now even they can have the ice, that is the why of the business, that is what you're trying to change. Similarly, there are N number of yoga classes out there. What is the mission that you are gonna choose for yourselves? Okay, enhance the, I'll just write all the possible options here. Enhance the health of the daily professional. Life, okay? Any other examples? Or let me know if you have not understood what, what this question is. This is super important, okay? Make simple, so are you suggesting simplify yoga or something like that, like we simplify yoga? Okay, bring our lifestyle changes, Shakib, ah. I don't know if it's, this is a strong one, honestly, uh. Because every yoga class will say this, no? Stress-free life also something is something that yoga classes might say, or the yoga classes might say, but okay, I'm just writing it down. Then. Free classes. That would have been a great positioning, yes, I agree, that free, but it won't be a business then, so we won't consider it. Hmm, hmm, that's not a very strong positioning, no, that, that, no. Only for women could be one, actually, yes. Or let's say only, uh, for, uh, you know, women during pregnancy, something like this. Okay, let's say, uh. Shall I just call it yoga classes for? Shall I just call it yoga classes for hardcore athletes or something? Simplifying it. Okay, yoga prop, yoga classes for specific ailments. Right, okay. So good stuff, guys. Now let me explain what has happened. Let's take, uh, this example, this one. Which is what yoga classes for hardcore athletes. All right, or okay, I'll give you a simpler one. Let's say this one, stress-free life or. I'll combine this, enhance the daily health of a profession. Professionals who are. Enhance the lives of. Professionals who are stressed out. Now, imagine that there are two types of yoga classes, okay? Now, you are someone who is stressed out. You are someone who is super stressed out and you come across two yoga classes. One of the yoga classes says that our teacher is a renowned yoga teacher. She has basically worked with a lot of gurus and has learned yoga from different, different ashrams. She was also away learning for three to four years. Yeah, and the yoga that we offer will not only help you reduce stress, it will also help you feel better spiritually. It will make you lose weight, it will, uh, you know, reduce your blood pressure and so on and so forth. That's first, that, that's the first yoga class. What does the second yoga class say? The second yoga class says that I was, uh, the founder says, I was first working in a corporate industry. And I was working in the I T sector, I was extremely unhappy with my life, I was stressed out, I was putting on weight. And I was just not living a very, very happy life or a fulfilled life. I realized that I needed a break, I took a break and for two months I went to this ashram in, in Kerala. And then that two-month vacation actually extended to six months and then eight months. And I learned the very basics of yoga and I came back with a single mission. That single mission was to help people reduce their stress in life. So the yoga classes that we offer are not for everyone, but they are for people who are specifically dealing with stress. Because I promise you that this particular thing, this particular yoga class will help you reduce stress and thus save a happier life. Professional, whom do you think will I connect with more? First or second? First or second? Whom will I connect with more? I'll connect with the second one. Why? Why second? Even the first one talks about stress, no? Why second one will I connect with? The answer is right. Yes, yes, it's, it's more empathetic. Because it feels, I'm, they're talking to me only. Yes, because of storytelling, because of empathy, I, it feels, yes, because of a narrow audience. Because of a narrow audience. So what do you say? We are a yoga class just like the other yoga classes, but. We only cater to stressed-out professionals. We are a yoga class just like the other yoga classes, but we only cater to hardcore athletes. Getting the point? So this is how, what is the positioning now. So now, I'll delete all of these, and you must have heard, sorry. You must have heard of this term known as, uh. Positioning of the brand. And you know how they used to do it? The whole team sits in one, one room and they figure out, okay, what could be the best positioning statement for our brand? And that is such a wrong way of doing it. Because you are trying to think of cool statements, quirky statements to just to make your brand look good. So it's a really selfish thing to do. But if you start off with a story like this, all the things are absolutely sorted already. Your, your, your positioning is sorted, your storytelling is also sorted, everything is sorted. So always start with this emotion when you, when it comes to a particular project. I'll just, uh, remove these rules. All of this in fact. So we'll, we'll go with what? We'll go with. We'll go with this as our statement, uh. So we'll, I'll just give this better words, help the stressed-out professionals. Deal with their stress. You know, or other, okay, empower the stressed-out professionals. To deal with the stress and live happily, something like this. Okay, now we talk about who is it for. So now we know what change we want to make, but this change is never for, for everyone. It's for only a few set of people. So let's define who is, who this change is for. Let's define all the things that we can for this particular audience. How will you define the audience? In what all different ways will you describe it? This is where, you know, the whole person is also coming to the picture, okay? This is an extent, I mean, the person is just an extension of this. How will you describe the target market? As simple as that. Okay, so what is the age group then? Okay, age is one way of describing them. Okay, so let's say. Uh, because we are catering to stressed-out professionals, what could be the age? Let's start with age, you know, so what is the age then? Guys, age, tell me the age. Thirty plus, okay. Or twenty-five, I think will be a little too low because I think the stress really starts settling in. Uh, let's say twenty-eight. To forty-two or something. All right, I mean, again, you can have different opinions on this, uh, but I've just taken a sample age group of twenty-eight to forty-two, cool. Okay, now sector, gender, I think will be both. Gender, I think will be both, unless you have decided to make it only for stressed-out women. You know, if, if that is what you wanna do, please go ahead, but for now, I think we'll just consider both. Sector, uh, this will need some research. Uh, okay, let's say marital status, but again, I'm not sure, Bhavana, how. Uh, if, if that will, that will be relevant in this case, but okay, we have to think of all the possibilities, so yes. Okay, so I T sector could be one, let's say marketing, let's say C's. BP also, okay, let's say B P O's. And so on. There, you have, we will have different answers to this, okay, after research, but right now we're just doing a rapid brainstorming. Uh, designation, anything specific to designation? Okay. Uh, okay. I, I think that even in this case designation. Uh, I'm not sure how effective it will be. Okay, but, uh, just for the sake of it, I'll write a few designations, okay, so mid to senior V Ps. These founders and CEOs are so stressed out, you know, founders and CEOs, etc. Let's say, okay, let's kind of define them as, uh, the elite class. Who are, who have these designations. So the more I speak about this, the more I realize that maybe this is not for, uh, 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 you know, someone who is middle class. Uh, but someone who is in the, in the, in the, let's say, in the upper class. Yeah, because it will be an expensive yoga class, we will have these different kinds of therapies. And different kinds of expensive oils and massages and all of those things. And hence the designations could be, let's say, V Ps and founders and CEOs and etc, etc. Okay, let's say marital status is, is married and maybe I'll just change the age group from twenty-eight. To, uh, thirty-two and I'll change forty-two to forty-five. All right, so. We could have a lot of things, yes, additional anxiety, family, huh. So, uh, we'll get deeper into that, Bhavani, just a minute. We could have that, yes, Ritu. Uh, for now, we'll keep it as wide as this. And the last is location, of course, we need to talk about location, right? So this is Kurega Park, Pune. This is K P Pune, it can't be for, for, uh, the whole world. So people who are living in Kurega Park, Pune, who are aged between the, it will thirty-two to forty-five, who are both the genders. Who are typically working in, let's say, I T sectors or. Are business owners. Okay, but that doesn't matter because this is, we are two sectors, okay, that's fine. The designation could be upper management or the CEO, CFOs and the business owners. Marital status is that most of them are married. Any other, uh, things that you would like to say, okay, so now when it comes to. Okay, let's, let's talk about this, that they're anxious, anxious because of their business. And financial commitments. Commit, business and commitments, etc. Anything else? Stressed out. Uh. Have high BP, for example. Pay issues. Et cetera. Anything else that, that, that you wanna add? Okay, this is good enough for now. We can have more of this, but this is good enough for now. Now, let's get into empathy. Now, what I want you all to do is give me statements when you become that person. Now, when it comes to empathy, don't try to, you know, don't write it as, uh, my target audience feels like this, no. Because again, you're separating yourself. You start, you do it as first person, you become that person. And then you write a few statements. So, let's say, I'll write the first one. I am so stressed out. I can't sleep at night. I'm not sure how to deal with this. Okay, what else? I am putting on weight like crazy. Need to. Crazy because of the stress. Need to do something about it. Okay, I get exhausted. And tired soon. I'm just unhappy and my life isn't. Uh. Life is, feels incomplete, let's say. I hope I come across something. Which will give me more fulfillment. I'm restless. Impatient and quick to act. I have all the money in the world. But no happiness. Okay, that's very nice. I want someone to hear me patiently. My work-life balance is absent. I now realize that money isn't everything. Okay, cool. Uh, we can have N number of these, we can have an essay on this, it's, it's recommended that in fact you write a short note on this. And write a, write like, you know, uh, all like go really deep with this. Now, why did we do, do this? Q K, like, is this gonna add any value to us? Of course, yes. Why? Because now you would not write an article about top ten mistakes made in doing Suraj Namaskar, no. That's not what the audience cares about. If my audience was hardcore athletes, then they would have cared about that. But now, now I know that, okay, my audience does not care about the top ten mistakes in Suraj Namaskar, what they care about are these things. So now I need to create content which addresses these things. So, you, you, you know, that circle, right? You have to understand the audience pain points and then. You have to address, then you have to create content based on your expertise. And now your content creation is much easier because you know, you know what to address. Is everyone with me? Is everyone having fun? Just type in. Bingo. If you're having fun, if you're with me, if you're understanding, if you have any questions so far, ask me before I move ahead. Just type in bingo if you're, if you're with me. Pingunayar, Bing, bingo, bingo. Different articles on these subjects too. Yes, we will, we will get into that, hold on. Okay, no problem. Cool, cool. All right. So now, now let's, let's, you know, discuss a few personas. So what is a persona? A persona is, is when you, you know, when you get into, when you create these characters. Okay, when you create these characters, yes, fictitious characters, you do some profiling. Yeah, so, uh. Ding dong, okay. Uh, okay, I'll, I'll start with the first one. Okay, so let's give him an arbitrary name, let's say, Rakesh. Rakesh Malik, okay. Uh, C E O of an I T startup. Extremely ambitious. But stress is now taking. Or too long. Okay, if you wanna elaborate on, on this more, let me know. It's a fictitious character, okay? Uh, there is, there are a lot of resources out there, it will help you to create persona, if you just, you know, Google. Uh, how to create personas, you will get a lot of, uh, uh, you know, research on that as well. So, uh, this is just one way of doing it. Okay, so he is the C E O and now stress is taking a toll on him. Let's talk about, uh. Okay, he is not being able to give time to personal health. All right, now let's talk about his hopes, his fears, his dreams, just a little. So this was, this was an overall empathy exercise. Okay, oh, an overall empathy exercise. Now we are getting a little deeper than that. Now we are figuring out the, the details of, of this particular person's hopes, fears and dreams. So what could that be? Now we are getting even a little deeper. So let's say, uh, extremely concerned. About keeping his clients happy. And as a result, as put in. As a, as a result, puts in. Long work hours. Doesn't sleep much. And now has. Uh. Developed insomnia. Okay, very nice. Uh, fear of failure. Fear of failure is, is very prominent. Wants to exercise. But doesn't have the time. Wants to be very successful, oh, very nice, hopes to get. Sorry. Hopes to get, uh, V C funding. Soon. Okay, uh, then now let's make it a little bit more health-oriented or yoga-oriented. As considered yoga. But is skeptical about it, let's say. Feels he doesn't have time for it. Uh, wife, his relationship with his wife and son have deteriorated. Both have, of both have suggested some spiritual practice. Okay, very nice, things yoga is hard. Things yoga is stupid. Okay, maybe things yoga is stupid is, is something that will do for the next person. Okay, now this is what he has to offer. Now, can you think of creating big rock content? Around these particular issues? Okay, now we are actually getting into the content marketing bit. What could be a big rock content? So a big rock can be a guide, it can be a long video, it could be anything. So now such ideas. Okay, so I can think of a big video. Uh, okay. Not sure if this can be a big rock content or a chocolate content, okay, but let's see. A video on how successful. Entrepreneurs take care of themselves. Through yoga and meditation. And thus. Have. Which has also made. Their business more successful. Why will this video click with this guy? Because he is anyway someone who is a motivated entrepreneur and he will realize that I need to take care of myself. Getting it. That's why that's why we are we are doing this. Okay, so now this can be like a sixty minute video, ninety minute video, which can be then broken down into different pieces. Okay, go on. So this is one. Uh infograph, I wouldn't call infographic as a big rock theme, content theme, such as. Uh it's still uh it's a still uh this thing. This is a big content, tathagata, like a like a really big content. Big rock content, no? An easy yoga poses. Okay. Let's say yoga isn't really. Okay, how about a complete guide? Or okay, it could be a complete guide, written guide or a video, let's say. Which explains. That yoga. Isn't really that hard. Oh, I love this. Uh. Interview with another young entrepreneur. Who could. Whose life changed. Because of yoga. Video on some interactive questions, okay? A little it will need some more substance to that, saga rica, but okay, I'm writing it for now. Um video testimonials. I'm a little skeptical of that Bhanu uh because testimonies again become more of promotion. I'll I'll put it in bracket. Central tips. Uh. Okay, I'll I'll uh change that to let's say how to incorporate. Yoga in your busy life. Research on rising. Then okay, now uh Navin, yes, now see, the 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 problem with with that Navin would be. That there are N number of yoga brands out there, thousands and thousands of yoga brands out there. And most of them will be producing a video around different types of yoga postures. So it becomes difficult for us to compete against them. And that is why we are focusing that sweet spot between, you know, the target market problems and what we are trying to do. Getting it. Not a lot of brands will let's say produce a video which is uh. An interview with a young entrepreneur whose life changed because of yoga. Why? Because they'll be doing overall, they'll be focusing on other aspects of yoga. So a good question to ask yourself is, how am I irreplaceable? Or how will it be difficult for other brands to copy my content? Getting it. So figure like go really deep and and create content on that. Hmm. So these can be, uh let's let's take one more, a complete guide on how. Yoga helps with insomnia, for example. Because there's insomnia issues as well. Alright, so this is the big rock content here. Now let's you know, let's just look at chocolate content and now these are like. Not standard terms, okay, these are just uh for our this thing. Uh chocolate content is more of sweet sweet content. What could this, what could this be all about? Let's say yoga. Let's say quotes around. All quotes combining. Uh motivation and yoga, for example, maybe. Could be one chocolate content. What could be the other one? Chocolate basically means sweet content, it is something which is uh which brings a smile to your audience. It's it's a pleasant content to consume. See how you can take the bigger of content and also break it into chocolate content. That's another way of thinking about it. Okay, let's say funny conversations. I'm just thinking out aloud, okay? I'm just thinking out aloud, I could be heard if you're wrong here. Funny conversations in your head when you can't fall asleep. So you have a series where you have funny conversations and then you at the end of that you write, yoga can actually help you with your sleep, something like this. Video with humorous content. So humorous video. Around the life of a. Of a busy professional maybe. I don't know. Uh. We will need to dig deeper into this. This is a great humorous video around the life of a business professional. It's something that seems a little incomplete. Okay, video of people whom are providing yogas who has mentioned. Oh. Didn't really get you, Neha. Video of people to whom you are providing yoga services at home. Acha acha acha, okay, okay, got it. Also the see, Neha, then you know that I wouldn't call as a part of content strategy. So I know where you are going at. Uh. Uh but maybe then you know we'll have to, let's say. Uh it's it's more in line with uh how yoga is not hard, something like that. Because it can't be a sales pitch. A content strategy should usually not be a sales pitch because if you are ultimately saying. That ha, we are doing, we are doing this, come join us. It doesn't become a selfless piece of content. Getting it, so your point is right. We just need to. Uh you know polish it and maybe present it in a better way. Yes, these are different from big rock because big rock content is usually a bigger piece of content. Either let's say a one hour video. Or a two hour video, or it can be a fifty slide presentation, or it can be a big complete guide. You know, like a fifty page guide or an ebook and so on. In that way, it is it is different. Yeah, let's say jokes around yoga. Et cetera. Okay, reason brand content is what a smaller piece of content which can be extracted from from this. Yeah, so uh let's let's see um. Okay, uh let's I'll give an example. Okay, so let's say uh there are successful entrepreneurs uh. Okay, let's let's take an example of of one entrepreneur, that let's say Elon Musk, okay? Now. The reason brand content, let's say in this video is a fifty-two minute video. And it has Elon Musk in it as well. Yeah, what would be the reason brand content? A three-minute video on the morning routine. Of Elon Musk. Getting it, getting how you can extrapolate this video and make it into a smaller piece of content. Yes, guys, you see what I did, then I converted, I extracted a three-minute video out of this fifty-two minute video. What can be the other things? So uh. A complete guide which explain that yoga isn't really that hard, so maybe. A ten post series on myths around yoga. So this will be a complete guide which will explain that yoga isn't really that hard, which means simply means that there will be a few myths which are posed. They like to chase the boss bias. So now we'll make, you know, a mix uh a ten post series on myths around yoga. This is how you break it or. Let's call. Let's say the first week of June would be. Battling insomnia or a better word for that, battling insomnia week. There for seven days. We have, let's say fourteen posts around how to deal with insomnia in general. Okay, doesn't always have to be about yoga. It can be just about, you know, dealing with insomnia. So this is again a bigger of content, this is this, a complete guide. And I'm kind of breaking it down into this. Okay, the last part will be let's say Tabasco content. So um. Tabasco is basically, you know, it is a spicy piece of content. It can be a humorous, sarcastic or a controversial piece of content. Can you guys think of a controversial piece of content which can go well around with this this particular uh theme? Any guesses? What can be controversial or you know Tabasco content around this? Hmm even I I am thinking, I am not sure. Yoga has been commercialized. Hmm. That is something that we could touch on because that people could talk about a lot about that. Yoga has been commercialized or in other words. Uh don't fall free to the. To the diluted version of yoga. Something like that. Ah that will be too much ritu. I mean that is, that is not even Tabasco, that is even more teka than that. Salman can't do it, no, no. What are you guys doing? No. You know, bits of missing yoga. Uh that wouldn't necessarily be Tabasco, so keep. It's 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 gotten more controversial. Look, I I know beer yoga is just a silly piece of content in mind. Um ha, so I think that goes in this only, you know, authentic yoga teachers and so on. Uh. See, let's say when you take a stand against someone, that could be Tabasco content. So you have taken a stand against these fake yoga teachers, that is one. What could be the other stand that we could take? Okay, let's let's take a stand against. Uh you have these things like hustle and all, no? Hustle. Working hard. So maybe you take a stand saying that the whole world is saying that be competitive. Work hard and hustle while all of that is fine, it is actually adding stress to your life. So in a way, taking a stand against these hustlers, getting it, this can be a Tabasco content. I love the creativity, ritu. Um. It's just a little funny. Um. We will need to, we'll need to polish it to fit into Tabasco. Alright, okay, uh this is about one person. I'll quickly just touch up on the next person, okay? So what the other person could be. Uh her name is, do we have a Shweta here? We don't have a Shweta, no, okay, cool. So let's say her name is Shweta. She is the PT of marketing uh at a. Uh again at a big IT, so she she is at a in a big IT company. A mother of two. Husband is always traveling. Yeah, okay, so now this she comes from a different perspective. She wants to cook. Raise the kids and also work. Basically, she is. Stressed out from the sheer volume of work. Alright, what else? What else is she going through? How could her problems be different from Rakesh is what we are discussing? Uh marriage not going well, okay? Then gaining weight gain. We have repeated a few points. I think we made this too complex, okay? The the Rakesh one, we got very excited. And subkuch, you know, everything negative we gave to Rakesh only, but we will give some negative things to. Uh Shweta also. Uh weight gain um. Or maybe. She is in the middle of her menopause. That could be one. Yeah, um. What else could be? Feels nervous despite her success, okay? Extremely concerned. About the well-being of her kids. And feels guilty for not giving them time and so on. Alright, what could be bigger of, yes, yes. What could be a bigger of content? Let's say, how to. I'm just gonna write random stuff, okay? Let's say how to make the whole family. Fall in love with yoga. Complete guide on that. I don't know if it is relevant to the problems, but I'm just gonna write it. Uh let's say women, a complete guide or a video on. How a working woman can integrate. Yoga in her life. And thus maintain a better work-life balance. Or an interview with Sifah Shetty. On how she maintains. Her busy routine. But still. Padma English, okay? But still practices yoga. And so. Yoga is not time-consuming, okay? Alright, and now you can break this further into this, into this. And into this, okay, so this this I won't delete right now. Because maybe I would like to touch on the next piece study as well. Guys, did you guys, did you completely understand what we did right now? Can I just, because there's some good work, like you see. This is some good work. All of this in just what thirty forty five minutes. Need everyone to say. Ula la. Need everyone to say ula la before we move ahead. Alirban, are you with me? Need everyone to say ula la before we move ahead. Priti Pallav, okay, Priti said, wow, everyone has different spellings. Good. Vinod G, are you there? All good, no eyes. Need some feedback. All good, I hope. Sachin, okay, Sachin said, Rupam. Oh, it's engaging, great. So let's take a one minute or a two minute break, shall we? And we'll quickly wrap up. We won't take like a really long. Time for uh the next case study. We'll we'll make a quick version of this. So I won't. You know, I won't keep you guys for long. Let's just take a two minute break and come back. Yes, I will mail this sheet to you after the class. Let's take a two minute break. Let's take a two minute break. Okay now I'll quickly duplicate this sheet uh so this this I'll say we to we to see. This will call be to be this copy this format here. Okay and here I will see that. There is a. Digital marketing agency. Let's say now I will say Bangalore. That's all I'll say. What could be what is the change that it is trying to make? This is this is old content so tell me how can we define the change now quickly? I mean there could be N number of ways of doing it. No no so the next business idea is of a digital marketing agency itself. That's the business or digital marketing agency. How could we position it guys any any ideas or I'll write the ideas. Uh more digital marketers for meeting. No no see 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 okay then let me just explain this see this is a marketing agency will have clients no. Who are who will be those clients let's start by thinking about that. Because a digital marketing agency cannot be for everyone it can only be for a for a few set of people. Or a few clients just like our yoga was not for everyone it was for a few clients alright. So let's say I will only give okay so this let's say the change that that they are trying to make is that uh. Uh. Ah okay great so digital marketing agency. For startups and SMEs only in India. Only startups let's call them only startups. Between so and uh companies with the each employees from one employee to let's say twenty employees. In India so this is our agency this our agency is just like all the other agencies but. We have a specialty in catering to startups. In catering to startups like this you can have any story you can have a digital marketing agency which cat which caters to only the food industry. Or which only caters to coffee shops and so on and so forth. Yeah so this is this actually belongs here and the change would be to empower the startups. Execute their marketing strategies despite their limitations. Because they have budget limitations time limitations resource limitations and so on and so. So this is the this is the who is it for? Guys everyone got the concept now now we are we are a brand which is catering to is a B two B brand. It's a it's a B two B brand for of I mean we offer digital marketing services but only to the startups in India. That's the whole this thing now uh okay sorry firstly who is it uh for will need for the elaboration because. Who do you think is the decision maker in this case? Who will be the decision maker in this case? There's a brand a startup okay let's say owner founder okay. Maybe the marketing head if there is any. Or a marketing executive who will influence it. And founder C E O C M O okay I also write owner founder C E O C M. This is this is pretty much enough what will be empathy okay all the empathy part let's say if it's a CEO I want my company to succeed. Because I have put in. So much money and time into it. What else I really want to have more clients. Yes I want to have more revenue. A very good I can't afford big marketing budgets. How the hell will I indulge in social media and digital marketing? Except okay we won't get this deep into this exercise now uh so personas could be what let's say CEO. Founder can be one person persona uh the other person could be the marketing head for example. Okay okay let's say not being able to scale and so on now here. As we have we are not gonna go deep into this person I think all of this can be can just be copy pasted here. So I remove this. Again guys this is a shortcut exercise not as uh deeply done as the first one. So again do the same exercise I mean if if we had the time we would do the same exercise again for this one going into the same depth. Okay want an agency which is committed. Okay what will be the bigger of content now for this? Very specific to the CEO okay. And guys okay let us take a pause I won't touch upon something then we do the empathy exercise. Or when we really try to get into the shoes of the other person when we try to figure out what does the target market really want? Don't just think of the superficial things. So for example I want more clients is a superficial thing this. When you ask when you take this term for example I want more clients if you say if you let's say. Go deeper than this what do you realize okay why do you want more clients because I really want my business to succeed. Why do you want your business to succeed? Because I have sacrificed so much for it. And invested so much money. Why why have you why why you feel so attached why do you have why have you sacrificed so much for it? Because I wanted to prove my friends and my family wrong. And if it fails they will all blame me. What am I doing here I'm basically trying to go deeper than. Just the superficial problems that the person is facing. This is one chain of thought okay this could be wrong I'm just giving an example. Another another thing that happens a lot with CEOs and CFOs and founders is that they are extremely lonely. They're super lonely because they have to take these these decisions and they have no one to depend on so loneliness could be one thing. And why is this important is important because instead of writing things like how to get more clients. If I write a blog on. Let's say how to deal. How can a founder deal with the negativity and skepticism? From the family is a much better article this article is much better than this article. Getting it that's why you have to go on deeper. All that does is wanted to touch upon this point as well yeah now what could be the bigger of content themes? Okay so we found one a complete guide on this or a video on this could be one bigger of content. Yeah uh what else could be a bigger of content let's say a complete guide on. Marketing with small budgets and things like that. Or let's say a complete guide on hiring. The best social media executives something like this. Chocolate content will be what funny quotes on entrepreneurship. Or problems that. CEOs go through. Or with surround having your own business. Except. Right what could be Tabasco here forget reason why what could be Tabasco content here think about it. Think about it Tabasco content and in the meantime. I'll give you a feedback link. And now this feedback link is extremely important to me so please fill in the feedback in the meantime you can also give me. Give suggestions for Tabasco content. And if you if you have any any questions you can let me know. Can you please help us on how content can be structured so as to start from the how? Ha okay okay cool so Ritu you are saying or maybe let me let me understand your question correctly. You are saying that uh or that you are concerned that we might just go off topic if we speak about um. Negativity of an entrepreneurship and uh. I mean we 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 won't be able to connect digital marketing with this with the negativity part. Right that's what you are concerned or when we might go off topic is is what your concern is if I've understood your question correctly. Uh that's a good question but see ultimately um everything doesn't have to end with digital marketing. It doesn't because you are eventually see why are you doing digital marketing because you want to empower entrepreneurship even if you go to your own personal mission. Okay it is what to empower the start startups execute their marketing strategy is also very lame statement. Okay it's a very lame statement let me just rephrase this empower you empower the startups in India. To spread their ideas so that. Their dream comes dreams come true or. I'll let marketing not hold back on your million dollar. Startup idea something like this what are we essentially doing we are not in the business of digital marketing. As you dekha jaye to digital marketing yes it's a tool for us but we are eventually helping them make dreams come true. In fact if you prepare a content around that uh it will. Connect with them much more rather than creating a content which is you know more tactical. So I think I just answer this in 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 different bullet points for you one it doesn't always have to end up with that. With digital marketing two out of ten digital marketing content little pieces that you can produce the eleven can always be be something like this. Or three you just you know make it maybe more digital marketing oriented let's say you say you change this. How can a digital marketing? Founder now this this example sounds lame I know. This example sounds lame but I I hope you get the point that you can always give it digital marketing flavor. Does that give you a certain sense of clarity okay if you look at a few brands you will realize that they go much beyond what their expertise is. Or other what they do what we do doesn't define us what defines us is what our mission is and what we stand for. Let me know Ritu what you think and if you if you still have any questions we can ask we can answer it. How okay that's that's a good one uh don't relax he sees uh we'll see we'll need to figure out how. Uh to connect it with this thing but okay you know don't don't relax you see this fine. Yes emotional connect is always more important it's always about the story that you wanna tell rather than uh you know what you actually do. See instead of you know selling a pen if I say this pen has a great refill you know it will it will uh. It will it feels so good on the hand instead of that if I say. Your child has studied so much for your examination for his examination. Why would he want something like a pen to come in his way? With this pen I promise you that your child will be able to write the the paper to the best of his capabilities. The second story must sounds much more exciting because you don't talk about the features there you talk about emotions. And as a parent who is concerned about his child doing well in the exam he instantly connects with it that's that's the whole point. Okay guys a reminder about the feedback if you have any questions let me know uh I will mail this sheet to you after the lecture other the course coordinator will. Uh if you are done with the feedback you can make a move and I hope you know I hope you all uh. Learned a couple of things and I hope we stay in touch maybe on LinkedIn or something or Facebook or or good. And all the best and do some amazing work out there yeah. That's very kind of you thank you thank you. Uh. So we are prohibited from giving a meal idea and it always puts puts in an awkward spot but I hope you understand. Uh. Thank you Rupam thank you. Thank you Kiran my thank you. Good night good night guys. Thank you Naveen. Thanks guys that's that's very kind thanks for the kind feedback Neha Naveen Kiran we know. Thanks Bhavana thank you so much. You have given me a couple of things to think about yeah Bhavana um I think especially about brand recall you know recall. I do agree that there needs to be. You know specific numbers in place I don't think I can I I answered the question I mean I could give the best answer to the question. So even I'll work on it even you work on it let me know if you come across something yeah. Thank you Sagai Kadada that's very kind. Thank you thank you Thakata thank you. I will share this with you after the class or the the course for that I will send it to you tomorrow. Thanks Bhavana thanks. Thank you Ritu. Thank you. Thank you Jigansha thank you Bhavana. Thank you thank you guys thank you Saurabh good night good night. Alright guys good night I'll come calling it off a final reminder for the feedback for those who have not filled it. 我会见你 不久后，希望 注意再见